Testing, testing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. If any member has reason to believe this meeting is being held in violation of this act, they should so state at this time. Hearing none. Have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bazare, Mr. Jones, Mr. Riggs, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Gorgone, Mayor Mullick, Deputy Mayor McDade, Mrs. Reed, Mr. Lundholm, Mr. Produces, Mr. Crippen. Thank you.
We have one resolution for approval this evening, 12 hyphen zero nine hyphen two zero two five, One Swain Property Management LLC, 305 Jackson Street, block 1040, lots 2.01 and 3, 313 Jackson Street, block 1040, lot number four. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, could I know who motioned? Mr. Gorgone, did you motion?
Yes, I think two of us did. You can give it to Dennis.
Oh, Mr. Crowley motions, Deputy Mayor McDade seconds. Mr. Gorgone, Mayor Mullick.
Abstained due to my absence.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Abstained due to an absence.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Produces?
Abstained due to my absence.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have minutes for approval. First set we'll vote on is for October 28, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Riggs motions, Mr. Gorgone seconds. Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
I apologize, I believe I was absent for one.
Let me see.
I abstain, I apologize.
We're just doing the 28th, right?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so you abstain?
I abstain, sorry.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
I abstain due to an absence.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Produces?
Abstained.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finally, for the last minutes, for November 10, 2025, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor McDade motions, Mr. Gorgone seconds. Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Abstained.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Abstain.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lundholm?
Abstained.
Mr. Riggs?
Abstained due to my absence.
Mr. Produces?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
There we one application for this evening. It's SP Cape May Marina LLC, 124 Roseman's Lane, block 1061, lots 101.05, for site plan preliminary and final, and waiver.
Mr. Chairman, I am a, I have my vote at the marina and a member of the paddle club. I'm going to abstain from the application.
Very good.
Would you like me to sit in the audience, or what's best?
I think you should sit in the audience, yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Is there, there's no other conversation after this?
I don't, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, is there?
No.
Bills, that's it. Very good.
Chairman, members.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Turn the mic, get a green button, there you go.
There you go. I'll start over. My name is William Kaufman. I'm a, an attorney with the firm of Nemat Davis &amp; Goldstein in Lake Harbor Township. I represent the applicant on this particular matter. The applicant here is SP Cape May Marina LLC. The property is at 124 Roseman's Lane. It's developed with the Cape May Marina. It's in the C6 zoning district. We're here this evening on an application made pursuant to section 417-3C of your site plan ordinance. We're seeking a site plan waiver. As indicated, the property is developed with the Cape May Marina. The Marina includes 210 boat slips, a marine garage, and a three-story Marina building and clubhouse. What is proposed here is the renovation of the first floor, or a portion of the first floor of the Marina building and clubhouse, into a members dining area. The Cape May Paddle Club occupies the first floor of that building and a portion of the second floor of that building. The members dining area is already subject to an alcoholic beverage club license that was issued by the governing body. That club license, or the approval of that club license, indicated that if the paddle club wished to outfit a portion of the first floor, then it would need to, for, as a members dining area, which is permitted under your ordinance, then the paddle club or the owner of the property would need to seek whatever approvals that were necessary from the planning board, or the zoning board, or the construction official. And that's why we're here this evening, seeking a site plan waiver. We have two witnesses this evening, one Sean Scarborough and the other Jason Shulo. And I guess, Mr. King, if you want those witnesses sworn at this time? Yep, I'll swear on your witnesses. I'll swear a board engineer for his testimony. Do each of you, please raise your red hand. Do each of you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth of God?
Yes, sir. I do.
Additionally, I should note that we also seek to add a porch roof above the entrance to the first floor. So it's a, it's a two-part application. Part is the renovation of the first floor for the members dining area, and the second part is the addition of the porch roof. Our first witness this evening would be Mr. Scarborough. Sean, would you describe your position with the applicant, SP Cape May Marina, to the board, please?
Yeah, I am the managing member, majority owner of Cape May Marina.
And do you also have a relationship with the Cape May Paddle Club?
Yes, I'm a trustee and the chief executive officer of the Cape May Paddle Club.
The Cape May Paddle Club was formed in 2014 as a nonprofit corporation, is that correct?
Correct.
And has been in existence ever since, is that correct?
Yes.
And it is a private, members-only boat club, is that correct?
Yes.
It's always been located at the Cape May Marina, is that accurate to say?
Yes.
And it occupies a portion of the Marina building at the Cape May Paddle Club, is that right?
Yes.
And currently, what portions are occupied?
We would call it the first floor ground floor, which includes the patio porch area around the pool and the first floor interior. And then the, the second, the second floor, we have office space associated with the Marina and any operation that we would need to undertake for operating the paddle club, management-wise.
When did your company acquire the property?
January 2013.
And going back, when you acquired the property, what is your understanding as to the history of the property dating back to 2004?
Originally, the property was approved and planned for, I think it was 2028 condominium form of ownership buildings, I think it was 14 buildings, 28 units. When we arrived, it was basically defunct. There was financial problems. There were 160 boats out of the water on the hard that winter. A lot weren't going to go back in. And that's when we entered the fray and purchased the property from the previous owner.
And you've had the opportunity to review some of the resolutions from this board in connection with the history of the property?
Yes.
Based on your review of the resolutions, do you understand that the Marina building and clubhouse was part of the original approved site plan going back to 2004?
Yes.
Okay. And in 2013, the prior owner, we understand based on resolution from this board in 2013, had two applications that were presented to the board, is that correct?
Yes.
And the first one, the prior owner sought preliminary and a final amended site plan approval and subdivision approval, is that correct?
Yes.
And the purpose of that approval was to separate the residential component from the Marina component? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
And that resolution was submitted to the board with this application, is that correct?
Yes.
And then in 2013, there also was a second application by the prior owner, is that correct?
Yes.
And that application sought an expansion of the number of units to be developed on the property from 29 to 37, is that correct?
Yes.
And at that time, the board, based on the resolution granted preliminary and final amended subplan, site plan approval, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And that memorialized, memorializing resolution was resolution 4-8-2014, is that right?
Yes.
And at that time, the site plan was amended, and it has not changed since then, is that correct?
There's been no change.
And we have that, Mr. Shulo brought that site plan, I believe, with him, is that correct? And... Is that the site plan that was approved in 2013 as set forth in the 2014 resolution?
Yes.
That was, that was part of the initial?
You don't want to mark it, okay.
Yeah, well, we... Do you want to mark that, or?
It's up to you, yeah.
It was part of the submission, I guess we can mark it as P1 now.
If it's in the submission.
It's, it was.
What's the date of that document? It's not as easy to market than...
So the last revision...
What?
March 19, 2014, for the site plan.
Thank you. And it was around that time that your company acquired the property, is that accurate?
Yes.
All right. And you continued to operate the Marina, and the paddle club then came into existence at or about the time that you acquired the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And when the paddle club came into existence and began occupying space in the Marina clubhouse building, where was it situated in terms of first floor, second floor, third floor? What was the situation at that time?
It was initially situated on the first floor, ground floor, both inside, outside, around the pool areas, and the third floor.
So what was going on in the second floor at that time?
It was office space.
And since the acquisition of the property by your company, did you then subsequently come back to this board in 2022?
Yes.
What was the nature of that application?
That was to reconfigure the third story, or the third floor of the building.
From space occupied by the paddle club into what?
Right, it was space occupied by the paddle club into a boatell residential use.
The boatell is a permitted use in the Marina district, is that correct?
Yes.
And this, your company sought the site plan waiver from this board, is that right?
Yes.
And that was granted by this board in '22, as more particularly set forth in resolution 05-24-2022, is that correct?
Yes.
And after the board granted the site plan waiver for the boatell, how was the third floor then configured?
Can I just correct something there?
Sure.
I don't think we granted site plan waiver. And this is something that Mr. Hurlis has taught me over the course of about 10 years together. We granted the site plan, but waived all or nearly all of the requirements for the site plan. And the resolution does carefully make that distinction. And I just want to continue that distinction because it's important to Mr. Hurlis. And so you will, you do have site plan approval, you did submit a site plan, but we waived the requirements that are in the checklist.
Yes.
Mr. Hurlis, did I state that correctly?
Section 417-3 is our site plan ordinance. And under that section, C allows for a waiver of site plan review requirements.
Okay.
So we typically grant site plan approval, but waive the requirements thereof.
And you're absolutely correct, Mr. King. That's exactly what the resolution indicates, and that's the exact nature of this particular application as, as well. After the board granted its memorializing resolution in May of 2022, was the third floor reconfigured then?
Yes.
And what happened with the space that, that was being occupied by the, by the paddle club?
That space was reconfigured into a three-bedroom residential use.
And that use has continued since 2022, is that correct?
Yes, that's continued.
And the paddle club at that time then was occupying the first floor, is that right?
That's right.
And some of the second floor?
Right. And, well, some of the second floor as it relates to office management of the club, that's where the office was.
Okay. And that's remained unchanged since 2022, is that right?
Yes.
Let me go forward then to 2024. In 2024, the paddle club made an application to the governing body for a ABC club license, is that correct?
Yes.
What was the situation at that time with regard to alcoholic beverages at the property and club members?
At that time, we were BYOB situation for club members.
Did the club members and trustees and the officers confer relative to the application that was made to the governing body?
Yes, we did.
And why, why was that application made? What was the motivation?
It was just to make it a better experience for the member group that we had at the club.
And in March of 2024, the governing body approved that application and granted a club license, is that right?
Yes.
And the license premises, as indicated by the sketch that is currently on file with the city clerk, indicate that all of the first floor is licensed, is that correct?
Yes, with the exception of the bathrooms.
But for storage only?
That, that's right, inside the building for storage only.
And the exterior area around the pool deck is licensed as well, correct?
Yes, the exterior area around the pool and building.
That's, in that particular area, service of alcoholic beverages and food occurs for club members, is that right?
That's correct.
And that area is not open to the public?
No.
And indeed, none of the club, none of the areas occupied by the club are open to the public, is that right?
That's correct.
And the resolution that the governing body adopted with regard to the club license included a special condition, correct?
Yes.
And essentially, it says, if you want to outfit the interior for a members dining area, go get whatever approvals you need from zoning, planning, and construction, and then report a change of facts. Is that how you understand it to be?
Yes.
All right. So since 2024, the club has operated with a club license for exterior, in the exterior area around the pool deck?
Yes.
And the, incidentally, the second floor is also licensed by the governing body, is that right?
Yes.
All of it?
All of it, yes.
All right. And how about the third floor?
No, the third floor is not.
And other than the area?
The second floor is licensed for the alcohol?
Yes, it is.
Storage only, or just anything?
No, I'll, I'll explain that. When you have an ABC license, wherever you keep your books and records must be licensed. So it's not licensed for any ser, we're not doing any service there, but we have to have it licensed because that's where we keep the books and records.
Thank you.
And in terms of alcoholic beverage storage, that all occurs on the first floor, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And can you explain to the board what the current proposal entails with regard to the first floor?
What we're proposing is to have a small area that members can eat undercover. Right now, we're purely outside. The only cover we have is really umbrellas and a slightly covered couch sitting area. This would give us a little more shelter and obviously connect to the existing patio and porch around the pool. And it would be, the area is really quite small. It's approximately 375 square feet. It's about 14 by 26 feet long.
And that was depicted on the plans prepared by Mr. Fenwick and submitted as part of the application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Jay, how that?
Is that square footage referring to the current outside location or the proposed inside?
The 375 is the proposed inside location.
Interior.
Yeah, correct. 375 square feet. The area depicted is yellow on that plan? Yes.
What plan is that?
So this is the floor plan that was submitted as part of the application, CHA 101, dated May 6, 2025 by Fenwick.
And Sean, if you can just, with reference to that particular plan, take us through what's existing and what you're proposing with regard to the first floor.
Can you bring the mic with you? The area right here is existing storage at this time. The proposal is to open up this space such that you can access it from the storage, which at this point in time, we, we go out this back door here, and over in this area is the pool and patio and the grill. This would be a door into this, from the kitchen area or storage area here. And then this would be the actual room that would be accessed across the front. And then this would be the actual room that would be accessed across the front existing porch right here and through that door.
Now, that existing porch is shown on the approved site plan, correct?
Yes, all of this is currently approved and standing, the whole perimeter of the building. This is just a simple reconfiguration of that space right there.
And there's some restrooms and showers and whatnot on the first floor as well?
Yes, this right here is the restrooms for the facility, right, right in this area.
And the restrooms are not licensed, is that?
That's correct, none of this is licensed, this box on the ground floor.
And nothing in that regard is proposed to be changed, is that correct?
No, nothing.
I think you indicated the yellow arrow comprised of about 375 square feet?
Yes.
And you're looking to add a bar area there, is that correct?
Yeah, this is approximately eight-foot-long bar.
And in terms of the number of seats that you're looking to have in there, about what?
I would say it's about 18 to 20 seats.
18, 20 seats at the bar or that includes?
Oh, no, the whole thing. There'd be four seats, including the four seats at the bar.
Is that area, oh, I'm sorry. Is that area that you're indicating as the kitchen exist as a kitchen now?
It's not a kitchen, it's really a storage area, we have refrigeration in there.
So how's food prep?
Well, we cook out on the grill.
But you're going inside now?
But we're not going to cook inside, we're, this, what we're doing in this area is we're still going to cook and all the food service comes from the grill still. But we store our food back in this area and can prep it to bring it out to the grill.
So what are your hours of operation proposed to be now with this addition? What are your hours of operation?
No change, no change.
Okay, so you're just summer months?
Yeah, it's just summer months. We generally try to open the week before Memorial Day if the weather holds up for us.
But you're not going to be doing this during winter hours?
Oh, no, no. And then we run into the fall, as long as the weather holds up sort of.
I have a question. How many members do you have in the paddle club?
We have 160 families right now.
So that would be?
It's about two, 2.1.
And are they all residents of that complex?
They're not all residents, but it's the boats and the residents, combination of both.
Come off the boats and they come off the residents. Suppose they drive in, where do they park?
Well, the boaters, they park in the Marina lot.
Does your membership include only boat owners that dock their boats in that complex?
No, it does not, it's open beyond that.
So members of basically the general public, who are members of your organization and they come and use this, right?
Well, there's no requirement to be a boat owner to use the facility, there never has been.
So your membership is open to the public?
It's, yes, it would be open, but it's a private membership club. So we limit the access to the club.
But not all boat owners that come there are members of the paddle club?
No, not everyone.
And the restaurant and bar that you're talking about is strictly for paddle club members?
That's correct.
How are you going to police that?
We police that through a membership tag system. Everything at the facility has a, there's a, if you're a boat owner, you get a pass card. And let's say you weren't a paddle club member, your card would only work to get into the bathrooms, but it wouldn't work to get into the paddle club. That's how we've been doing.
Do your paddle club members, are they permitted guest, day passes, things of that?
We do have a guest policy for paddle club members that we, there's a state policy when it comes to club membership and then we have a policy as well.
Are they permitted to have alcohol at present, the guests, from the members' stock?
If they're with a bona fide member, they can purchase alcohol with the member pursuant to New Jersey law.
I have a question. Back in April of 2022, resolution 524, 2022, one, you converted your clubhouse into a boatel.
Correct.
And from my recollection, and tell me fellow board members if I'm incorrect, that this boatel now called the Mermaid House, is that the correct name?
Yes, that's what we call it.
Was to be limited to people who had boats. And that only they would be able to rent this boatel. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
That should be in the minutes. Do you rent that boatel to people who do not have boats?
Well, we have reserved, what we did was, we reserved a slip at the Marina for the Mermaid House. That's what we, that's what we did when we did that resolution, which I haven't read in quite some time. But, and the purpose of that was to always make sure that there was a correlating parking space related to the house upstairs.
From my recollection, and tell me if I'm wrong, the only way you could rent that condo was if you had a boat. Am I right or wrong? And that boat was staying, was staying in that reserved spot?
Let me ask the question this way, Mr. Scarborough. The operator, is the boatel, the boatel is limited to the third floor, correct?
Correct.
And the boatel is operated as you indicated to the board it would be, is that correct?
Yes.
And there's never been an enforcement action taken relative to the boatel, is that correct?
No.
I'd like a yes or no answer. You rent only to somebody who is there with a boat that wants a residence to sleep in rather than their boat for the night?
No. There are people there that have stayed there that didn't have a boat, but they had access to a boat slip.
Can you explain that a little bit more? I'm a little perplexed with that.
Okay, so we have, we went into a situation where we also rented boats for people. If they wanted to stay, we would have a boat for them to use.
Sure.
When they were there. And we've reserved a slip for that. And we also have a slip reserved for people if they come by boat. We put it out there both ways. So some people come and they use the boat that we have available for rent and some people come by boat and rent that way.
So I mean, I think the board would look at clarifying anything, if we were to grant any approvals this evening, on exactly what we intend for that third floor to look like and operate like.
Well, I have, wait, I have another question, hold on. If I go on Airbnb right now and I'm scared of water, no, I'm not personally.
Right.
I don't want to go near water. Could I rent that Mermaid House if it was available by click of a button on Airbnb?
We would accommodate, you want to tell you you can bring a boat or rent a boat, yeah.
Would you require, would you require the rental of the boat?
We don't require it, we just make it available as part of it.
That the board members are getting to is, this is really, in fact, just happens to be an Airbnb at a Marina. I think that's the way it's coming across, that's I think why there's this discussion.
Well, so essentially, I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, the intent of the board at that time was to say, that third floor unit, the intent is, hey, I can come by boat, stay for the evening, and then get back on my boat and then off I go.
From my recollection, and I know a lot about boats, and I have a very good memory. When you approached this board in April 2022, you stated that people come with boats and sometimes there's no room for them on the boats and they'd like to rent a room for their guests or people are visiting them. They have a boat, so the people don't own the boat. The people staying in the boatel don't own the boat, it could be their children, their parents, even friends, but they're associated with a person who's either in that reserved spot who or who is a member of your club. That was my recollection.
Unfortunately, we don't have a liar recollection, we write this stuff down. And what it says is pretty clearly actually.
Okay.
It says, and I don't mean to say it's clear because I wrote it, but I did kind of listen. It says, it will only be, this is Mr. Shula testifying. It will only be used as a transient unit by Marina customers utilizing an existing boat slip in the Marina. There will be a one-bedroom, a one, there will be one three-bedroom unit and it's contemplated that the transient users will be boaters who are storing a boat or boats in slips that are not occupied at the time of the slip owners. This meets the concept of a boatel, which seems to say that it may be a boat slip or a combination of boats that are parked associated with a transient stay. And this is where it gets interesting. It says, it was ultimately determined that there will be little impact on parking as a result of this use. It was agreed by the applicant that the intended purpose and only purpose of this three-bedroom unit is for transient use associated with Marina stays and it is not a three-bedroom residential unit to be leased for other purposes, nor is it to be a residence.
And, and by the way...
It continues. Then there was a motion granted. And it says, the board accepts as fact that there are no external changes and the board acknowledges this appears to be an appropriate boatel use so long as it is clear the three-bedroom unit is not to be used as a residence or hotel, but rather as a boatel tied specifically to boats that will be moored in existing slips without an increase in intensity of parking at the site and that it is truly, it is a truly, quote, transient use as contemplated by the ordinance. So, I mean, I have to say that I envisioned it being, people call in, do you have a slip available? Yes, we'd like to stay for the night, they dock their boat, they stay overnight. Transient use tied to someone boating at the Marina. And that was pretty clearly represented and I actually wrote it down. What you're saying now that it's an Airbnb and if they happen to have a boat, they can put it in a slip, that's not really what we were...
Well, that's not really what I'm saying. What I said in the interpretation from Mr. Shula's testimony was, we related it to a slip and parking. And what we did when we got through the process was, we took a slip and carved that out and associated it with this unit permanently, instead of, well, maybe we have a slip available, maybe we don't have a slip available. That's what we tried to do to accommodate that resolution. And we left it that way since that time.
You have it backwards, that's not the purpose of a boatel. The purpose of the ordinance is that it's not where, as long as you have a boat slip, then you can put an unlimited number of units tied to a boat slip as if it's a parking space. That's not what it was. The board created a boatel.
Right.
And made this exception for boatels in an effort to encourage transient use by boaters. Not as an Airbnb where someone can put a boat in if they want. So you kind of have it backwards, it's supposed to come from the ocean to the land, not from the land to the ocean. So I have to say that what you're describing, the way you're using that, is very inconsistent with this resolution. And the reason why my board apparently thinks it's relevant, I did not see this coming, your testimony has really put a point on it, is that the concern at the time was intensity of use and parking. And if you're not using it to encourage the boatel use, then you shouldn't get the benefit of this maneuver that they've created in this ordinance that says, well, we're going to pretend that an Airbnb with three bedrooms is all having, going to, not going to increase parking because they're going to be using a boat slip and they don't generally have cars. So now it's all messed up. And now you're talking about putting a bar and a restaurant in there and you have everyone's attention because this thing was talking about how great it is, we could have 120 people up there and now there's not going to be 120 people up there. And now they're going to really focus on parking, which is what you've kind of backed yourself into.
So you're absolutely correct. You're relaying that is absolutely what happened. But in addition to that, this is the first time this town ever had a boatel. And it's a transient rental. And we regulate transient rentals through the licensing mercantile licenses.
Yes.
Do you have a license for this place?
Yes, we do.
You file every year for a mercantile license?
Oh, yeah.
For the boatel?
Yeah, for every use on that property, there's multiple uses with...
And you describe this, I'm sorry, Dennis, you described this in your application to the city clerk?
Yeah, we, well, I don't, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what's on the application here.
Well, I think we are kind of delving in and questioning because it seems that although the planning board gave specific criteria, as Mr. King has said, it's sort of been applied in the reverse. And that the board at the paddle club made a decision, sure, we'll put aside and identify a boat slip so that we can have it associated with this. But in fact, you've opened it up to the public to say, you can come, rent it. If you need a boat, we can rent you one, but it's not, it's not the criteria, which is, I think, what the planning, what the planning board agreed to in passing it in 2024 was, it was the criteria. So that's why I think there's a little bit of confusion and clarity.
If I may, the nature of this application is whether, and the issue presented by this application is whether or not the applicant should be granted a waiver from the site plan requirements for the member, the indoor member dining area for the paddle club. We're not here relitigating the boatel. And if the municipality thinks as though that there is an issue regarding the operation of the boatel, then I would suggest that the person that should deal with that is the zoning official because it's an enforcement issue, not a site plan issue relative to the member seating area for the paddle club.
I do believe, if I can just speak for, on the city side of it, I do believe it's relevant to what we have going on at the property though. And I think that's what the board is trying to say right now, at least from my perspective. And we're trying to make sure that we're going to have consistency in application. So whatever you're telling the board is what's actually going to happen out there. And I understand that the zoning officer is the appropriate party, but we also need to make sure that what you're giving us is reliable testimony too.
And the other thing too is that you indicated that your site plan is 11 years stale. And since that time, things have happened to this property, city has approved them. It's expanded to a point where the site plan itself is stale. That little piece of property you showed in your site plan, which was that building, it was just a little building. Now, now it's a paddle club with 200 and some members who can also bring guests and they all come in cars and you have a boatel, which you're renting on the Airbnb market to people who drive cars. And so the whole concept of what happened at that site plan review in 2014, it seems to me as though the whole site plan ought to be reviewed because you're doing stuff to that property. You're shoving uses into that property, which were not envisioned in the site plan. That the uses of that property in 2024 don't appear on a site plan anywhere.
Well, I would indicate, if we look at Mr. Hurlis's narrative report to this board and we turn to page five of it, we haven't heard from Mr. Hurlis yet. He's got the zoning chart there and the column entitled "Status", every aspect of this site plan conforms with the city's ordinances, including the parking.
Well, it is, it doesn't, it doesn't. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, if you want to argue with Mr. Hurlis about that, but his, his report... Yes. His, his report indicates that this property conforms to the city's ordinances.
I thought that's what you said, I thought you were done, okay. The part that I'm confused about though, and I'd like Mr. Hurlis to address this. My general recollection, and I'm not certifying to this, okay? My general recollection is at that meeting, I write down as much as I can, but I don't write down everything, that this clubhouse normally would have a parking element itself, okay? It has seating, it's a clubhouse, it's a restaurant. And, but the idea at the time that we talked about it then was that its activities were members so that they either lived there and had parking and would walk there or they had boat slips and attended from the boat, okay? The testimony that we just heard though is different than that. That the membership is not tied to being a resident and the membership isn't tied to having a boat slip. So now it's basically... So, so now it's basically, where are the people parking that are members who don't have a residence and don't have a boat slip? And how many of them are there? Because Craig has nothing in his chart for the 18 parking spaces inside and the however many are outside. And if those aren't tied to a boat slip, and they're not tied to a residence, I, I admit that I'm a little confused about the parking. I, I had understood previously, when we talked about this before, the idea was, well, it's not the idea, it's in here, that there was this upstairs clubhouse, and that could have 120 people in there for an event. And they were condensing that down to being a residence, and that that, that residence would be only used by boats that came in, and then they could stay there. And that made sense to the board, and they kind of didn't get too, they were concerned about the parking, that calmed them about the parking. And I have to say, at the time, it was my general impression that the reason the parking wasn't an issue is because the parking was dealt with in other aspects of the site plan, because there was housing and marinas. But once you have the membership that aren't boats and aren't residents, I don't see how those, that those people are tied to a parking space anywhere.
We've been, this has been the case since 2014. Let me explain something. That was a hole in the ground up there. It was a nightmare. It was a pit. The mayor and this board was so happy that we came and did what we did and, and regenerated what is the nicest marina in the Cape May market, without question. That's what we did. There was, there was 168 boats on that ground. Fifty of them were never going to go in the water again.
It may be awesome.
But, 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 no, 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 let me, let me finish. You're cutting me off now.
Go ahead.
All right? I have operated a $15 million property around a marina. If you can't park to go to your boat, you don't rent a slip. We've been sold out from year one since I rebuilt that marina. And the customers that we have at the paddle club that are mostly from homes in the marina, but there were no homes there. But I built $75 million of property that gets taxed every year, forever. Everything works fine. Everything's fine there. We have, we have open spaces. It functions. It has to function, otherwise I won't have a marina. It won't work. When you show up to a boat, if you're going light, you bring 40 pounds a person. You can't, you can't not have a parking spot. So the point is that it, it works. So I think, like, to, to ignore the fact that I've been there and part of this community for going on 12 years and turn this thing around is a little one-sided, to say the least. I'll answer anybody's question, but I've been there for a dozen years. I don't have one complaint in, in all those years from the zoning officer.
Let me, let me ask you this question.
From the zoning officer, sir, but I know there are complaints from the people who go to the paddle club. I live in town, I was a member of the paddle club at one point. And when you started that paddle club, there were no houses there. So there was a lot of parking where there are now houses.
No, there wasn't. There was never a permitted parking spot where those houses are. Not a permitted parking spot, never once. Never, never once on that plan that was up there.
So where the houses are-
Yeah.
-in Spicer Creek, I guess it's called-
Right.
Cars didn't park there?
I'm not telling you that a car didn't park there, but it's a grass strip, right? Somebody could have parked there, we even stored boats on it. But it wasn't part of the plan. This, it's been in this configuration for six years. If you're, if, if the parking fails, I fail. The marina doesn't work.
So how many parking spaces, if I went to count them right now, actually exist for-
126.
Scrivver, I, I led you-
Yeah. I'm sorry, yeah.
Scrivver, I don't, I don't vote, okay?
I understand that, I know it works.
I'm not a position on approving or not approving. My job is to make sure the right approvals are requested, and then the approval is granted if that's what they want to do. That's my job. The part that is, you have 105 required spaces, and you have 123. Your parking may be awesome, okay? It may work fine, but we have to know what number are required for the use you're proposing, and then if it's not enough, then you can give all these great reasons why it functions awesomely, and they can grant it. But what I can't do is have you come in and say, "We're going to do this with this building, this residence, and that's how it's going to operate, so don't focus too much on the parking. The board agrees with you, and then you don't do what it says." And now you come in, that's the bottom line of that. That's not really, that's not really disputable, okay? I was there for that, I was there for your testimony, so I know what I know about that, okay? Now, when you come in, you are, we aren't talking, sure, there may be plenty of parking for boat slips, for boats and boat slips. There may be plenty of parking for residences, okay? But now we're trying to understand what goes on in this building. And it may be, when we do an appropriate analysis based on the number of seats, that you have adequate parking. I have no idea. All I know is this, you just testified under oath that there are essentially non-residents and non-boat users using this new bar and restaurant that we're about to-
I did that 10 years ago.
Okay, hold on, don't yell at me, hold on a second. And all I am saying is, we may, I need to understand the parking calculation for that, okay? And, and how many, what's the permitted number? What's, it's based on the number of seats, not the number of your members, that doesn't matter.
No, it's not.
It's done on seating.
No, that's, Mr. Shula-
Is it not?
No, Mr. Shula can address the parking, if we want to isolate on the parking. Let me first ask some preliminary questions of Mr. Shula. Mr. Shula, you're a New Jersey licensed professional engineer, is that correct?
And planner, yes.
And you're a New Jersey licensed professional planner, is that correct?
Yes.
You previously appeared in front of this board to testify with regard to a variety of projects, is that correct?
Yes.
Including on this particular property, is that right?
Yes.
I would ask that Mr. Shula be recognized as an expert in the field of engineering and New Jersey planting.
Thank you.
Mr. Shula, you testified in connection with this project in 2022, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the site plan, is that correct?
I am.
You're familiar with the Cape May ordinances?
Yes.
And can you explain the parking calculations for this particular property as it currently exists and as it is proposed to be utilized?
Sure. So the original approval from 2004, which carries into this updated version in 2013, and then again in 2022, generally, the parking requirement was based on a number of boat slips, and it was based on an old number that DEP used to enforce, that's no longer in place, at .6 spaces per slip. That's the only parking requirement that exists at the site, the, aside from the separate residential. So, Rich, when you were talking about number of seats generating a parking requirement, that applies to a public restaurant or bar, but it doesn't apply to a club. The club is permitted in the zone, and there's no separate parking requirement for it. The membership, you said it doesn't matter.
That can't be, that can't be the rule.
That's not-
Because it can be, it can be based on the number of slips if the club members are slip owners. That makes perfect sense.
I'm, I'm not saying that I want it to be this way, that's the way it's written.
But you cannot say, "We are now having membership open to everyone in Cape May." No sane person would say that you can have, they could have 480 members under that standard. That can't be the rule. I mean, what am I missing?
There's confusion over the, the number of members. You were saying the number of members don't matter, but that's the only thing that drives the parking, and it's not changing. It's 10 years, it's been the same number of people. Nothing is changing. All we're doing is putting space inside the building for them to get out of the weather.
Where's the testament that the number of members is the same?
He just did.
Yes, I, I did. If, if I could, if we could just take a moment and say, what-
Can we just resolve that factual thing before I type it in my thing? Mr. Shula has just said that the number of members hasn't changed since the 2014 approval?
Since they started operating, yes.
Let me, let me hold it, just a second. The 2014 was the last time you did a site plan. The paddle club didn't exist until when?
2014.
2014.
After, after the site plan was approved, then you put the paddle-
It was part of the site plan.
It was part of the approval. We didn't put it in before it was approved, we put it in when it-
It wasn't added afterwards.
In 2014.
You sure?
I'm absolutely sure.
All right. Can I get a, your engineers represented that the membership hasn't changed since 2014, is that accurate?
I'd rather be more accurate and say, "We have 160 families associated with the membership in 2025."
How many were there in 2024?
I'd have to go back, maybe it's 160 families. That's how we do it. I, I would have to get the data for you. I don't have every year memorized, but I know this much. That's the number that works, and that's where I wanted to get to. If we're here to, do you think I have a parking problem down there right now?
I think what we're trying to establish is just making sure that we, as a board, understand the conditions in which you're operating. This is not a challenge on you or how you operate your business. This is a clarification to make sure that we understand the conditions so that when we're evaluating the site plan, which is what was brought before this board, this application tonight, that we understand all of the conditions. The other piece of it is, is the 160 families. Is there a charter document within your organization that, that, that shows that, that indicates that somewhere?
Yeah.
That your board-
We're required to keep that record for the ABC now, but we've always kept that record for our nonprofit status with the, for the federal government.
I would suggest that you have that sent to Mr. King. This is part of what is becoming the official record.
I, Ms. McCade, I so appreciate what you just said, because I think I can solve the problem if, if I'm not being attacked for not having enough parking, like I'm a merchant downtown, and I don't think I am, right?
No one's attacking you for the parking. But you need to know what parking you need, and then you can get it granted. So no one's attacking you for having bad parking. I have no, the park could be awesome there, I have no idea.
Nothing is changing on parking because I'm not adding one more person to the mix. But let me, here's the question, here's the solution to this discussion. What will I limit the family membership to? Because you made the point, it could be 480 people. You are absolutely right. I'll never do it because I'll destroy my marina. So I'll tell you right now, the most important thing, if I'm on the other side of this, trying to get to a resolution, is say, "Will you just keep it at 160 families?"
That would be a condition of use that you-
I will do that. I will tell you right now, it solves everything we just discussed.
Except for, I think that there's still the question for this board to get clarity around the conditions for the boatel. And so it may be another consideration that you also consider that that is not available as a transient rental, that it is, that you apply the rules that this board put forth when it approved it, understanding that you are either coming in by boat and/or, that's it. You're coming by boat, or you have a boat in that marina, and you want to use it. Outside of that, I would say to you, that is where we would continue to kind of question, because I think where Mr. King was going is, if that's used as a transient rental, there is a parking requirement for that unit. And to avoid that, in case your number doesn't fit within the chart, you could, you know, put forth a condition.
Clarify that, that's not accurate.
No, okay. I'm just trying to make up a solution.
If it's not a boat parking there and then using the unit, it's not a boatel. Therefore, it's not a permitted use. The only use that's allowed in that location that doesn't require a use variance to have a house above a club, okay, is a, a, a unit that is used with a boat that comes in in a transient use and then stays there while their boat is docked there. That's what a boatel is. If they want to get approval for an Airbnb above a club that serves alcohol, then Craig has to do an analysis, has to determine if that's a permitted use, and then you grant it or deny it. That's just how it is. The boatel is what was allowed there. Am I misunderstanding that, Craig?
So the, the parking analysis up to this point, let me just make sure my mic's on. The parking analysis up to this point, and I think this is the, Jay, that exhibit that you have up there is the 2014 site plan?
It's the one, yes. That was the one that was approved under that resolution.
So as part, you gave, you submitted three sheets as part of this. Three sheets of that site plan were included in your application for this application. To my knowledge, there has never been a parking analysis done for the club. If you look on the sheet, there's a marina calculation. It's required, .5 spaces for the city, .6 spaces for CAFRA, times the 210 public slips, and you get that, that information. And then on here it says, "Provided, public spaces at 123 spaces." And then there's a residential calculation, okay? So, and I've never remembered the board or myself having that conversation at, at a board level with how many members there were or, or anything like that. So as far as I know, there has never been a parking analysis done for the club. So the, the reason why the board is struggling and that the fact that we're questioning how many members you have or whatever is whether it fits in with the parking. Now, as part of my review, I, I do indicate that the parking was conforming, and that is just based on the information that we have. I, I have the marina calculation in there with our, our city requirement, and I also have in parentheses, "There's no requirement for transient parking accommodations." That was how the board approved the last-
Right, right.
-approval. But as part of it, if you look above the zoning table, and that starts on page four of seven and five of seven, so, and I start talking about the uses. So it says, "Marinas, boat clubs are, and are permitted uses, permitted uses subject to section 525-65." And then it says, "Boatels or other transient residential accommodations for boat travelers, when located immediately adjacent to boat docking facilities, are permitted uses in the zone." So that's our permitted uses. Now, I also copied and pasted section 525-65, which is, you're permitted a club, but it has to be subject to you meeting the conditions of section 525-65. And I asked the applicant on page five of seven, "The applicant should provide testimony conforming that the proposed improvements and changes comply with the boat club requirements stated in that section." If you note, under, on page four of seven, at the bottom, under A, boat clubs, section three has parking. And that says, "Parking shall be provided in accordance with the provisions of section 525-49." That is our standard parking requirements. That has the menu of all of our, for all of our uses. And in addition to that, it says, "Two off-street parking spaces shall be provided for each trailer or bulk boat. Use of a boat club facilities shall be strictly limited to the number of boats for which two off-street parking spaces are provided and available." So that analysis has never been applied to whatever was going on with the club.
Right.
So, you know, the board may grant you a parking variance, but I don't know that that analysis has ever been done at any of your site plan applications. And that's why there's just fear of, you know, any owner can just allow as many families to participate in your club and create a parking problem. Obviously, as a good, you know, owner, you're not going to do that, but the board still has to do an accounting of what's on the site, and, and if there's an appropriate waiver or variance that's necessary, they have to make that analysis. What I'm telling the board is that analysis has never been done with regards to the club.
Is, is the membership of the boat club, do you have to own a boat?
No.
So, and essentially, it's a social club.
The paddle club.
Well, it's a social club, like any yacht club. I mean, this was largely written around Corinthian, that, that language there, Corinthian yacht club. I mean, like, there's a lot of people in yacht clubs that don't-
So really, really, it's a, it's a, it's a unique use within a larger marina complex. It's a social club.
There's a social aspect, sure, yeah.
And so people join probably as much, if they own a boat or they just like to go to the pool, or they have a pride-
Or a paddle, paddleboard, or whatever.
From a zoning standard, the, the membership is not really dictated in, in the zoning code. So, you know, but the requirements are.
Right.
So that's-
And the membership and the activities aren't dictated, but the impact of the club and its members and its activities on parking is-
Right, the number, the number is kind of controlled by the parking requirements.
Exactly, that's, that's actually my point.
It's, and ultimately, it's controlled by common sense. You know, you're, you're just not going to have a business model if you-
And, and I-
We don't, our, our zoning doesn't leave it to the business model of the owner. We don't, our, our zoning doesn't leave it to the business model of the owner. So I, I agree with you, by the way. I'm an advocate of, I don't, I believe parking is mostly ridiculous, okay? I, I don't know, somehow Tisha's operates without any parking. I mean, people walk to places, they make do. I, I think parking is overrated in, in the town. But leaving that, that's not, that's not my job. I don't make policy, okay? So, the difficulty is this, I have a slightly different recollection than Craig does in terms of testimony about parking. I kind of recall Mr. Shulo saying, when this boatell thing came up, and I was kind of baffled by the parking in this whole complex. And Mr. Shulo testified that it was built, it was, it was in there, it was, it was in the rago, that when they approved this whole site plan, there was a boat club, okay?
It's true.
Because there's boat slips and there's residences, that, that satisfies the parking idea for the boat club. It was all done together, okay? And at the time, we were just dealing with this, this boatell thing, and nothing else was changing. And the argument at the time was, this is great because it's making the clubhouse smaller. We can have 210 people up in this space, we're making it a house. So we're actually reducing the intensity of this use. This thing is great. And that's how that was approved. But I will tell you that in my mind, the argument there was, this all makes sense because the residents are using it, the boat slip people are using it, and that's what this is for. Now that it's a social club serving alcohol with membership that's not limited to the residences or the boat slips, that to me is a term, a situation where we got to say, well, wait a minute, what's the parking situation? Now, it may be that your persuasive business mind and your excellent counsel and your great engineer, we look at the parking and they say, hey, this parking is fine, okay? This is, this is perfectly fine.
We already did that in 2014. Everything you just described, you make it sound as if I'm coming in with this new plan, I'm going to have more seats, and we're opening a restaurant and all. None of that's true.
Let me ask you, let me ask it this way.
At all, we just opened some space.
Let me just ask you to...
For the same people to go into.
These couple of questions because...
I'd like to review the 2014 testimony.
It's, it's, this is, this is important. Up until this point, between 2014 and now, well, let's, between 2014 and 2024, prior to the issuance of the club license, the, the membership of the paddle club utilized the pool deck area for food service and their own alcoholic beverages, correct?
Yes.
And since 2024, when the club license was issued, um, the only change in what was going on in the exterior was now the club members were purchasing alcoholic beverages, um, through the club license and weren't bringing their own onto the premises. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. With the proposed member dining area, what's going to be occurring that is no, that hasn't already been occurring since 2014?
Nothing.
Mr. Shulo, um, with regard to the site plan, how will the membership dining area impact the site plan? The approved site plan as it wa, as you have it on the board, as it was submitted, as it was approved by this board in 2014?
It won't. No change in space, no change in area, no change in use.
Will the member dining area impact the existing building arrangements?
No.
Will it impact the driveways?
Nope.
Will it impact the number of parking spaces available?
It will not.
Will it impact ingress and egress to and from the site?
No.
Will it impact drainage facilities?
Nope.
Will require any changes in grading or other existing grading, uh, drainage patterns?
No.
Will there be any change to utility services?
No.
Will there be any change to landscaping?
Nope.
Will there be any change to buffering?
No.
How about sight lighting?
No change.
Any other considerations of site plan in light of the definition of site plan as set forth in the municipal land use law?
No.
Will adding the porch over the existing contract, uh, concrete porch, porch inexorably, uh, inexorably alter the existing building in any way so as to render the building non-conforming?
No.
Will the addition of the porch roof, uh, alter the building height?
No.
Will alter the building or lot coverage?
No.
You reviewed Mr. Hurlis's report?
Yes.
Do you have any issue with anything that he has set forth in his report?
Only one comment at the end that we're in the historic district and we're not.
Okay.
I think it was a typo, Craig.
And in his report, Mr. Hurlis indicated that PA, and I think he needs, I'm not, I think he meant Polystyne Associates in that, and needs to check his, uh, his report, but I think he said PA supports the site plan waiver application or the application for, uh, that we've put in front of us.
Waiver of site plan.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I read too.
All right. And would you agree with his, uh, conclusion in that regard?
Yes.
That is the issue that's before this board, is whether or not the site plan will change, not the operation of the boatell. That's, that's been dealt with in the context of the prior approvals. This is not a reapplication of the boatell. The parking has been, uh, approved on the 2014 site plan. There are 123 parking spaces. Mr. Hurlis sets forth that. There's no change in the membership being proposed. There's no change to anything that is happening with regard to the club and the club membership. This application, as it is before you, does not alter any aspect of the existing approved site plan. And that's what we have in front of us, a site plan issue, not the use. If we were looking to have a Airbnb on the third floor, Mr. King is absolutely 100% correct. We would need to, uh, present an application to the zoning board for a use variance. We're not here doing that.
Excuse me, you do have an Airbnb above that boatell.
Well, I...
There is an existing Airbnb currently. You can bring it up online right now.
Well, it's not just online, that is the testimony at present.
Right. Well, to, to be clear, Airbnb is not a use. Uh, it's just the platform to rent, but it is as...
Stand corrected.
Well, you knew that anyway, I'm just...
An illegal leased unit.
It's a leased unit. It's a, it's a short-term rental, that's what it is. And that was what was approved. Um, as just mentioned by Bill, nothing's changed. In the 2013 approval, it mentioned specifically Cape May Paddle Club. It doesn't just say clubhouse, it says this use. It's exactly what Sean was doing. In the 2013, 2014 resolution, the 2013 approval, it names Cape May Paddle Club. It talks about exactly what he's doing. It doesn't just say clubhouse generically, it says Cape May Paddle Club. This isn't new.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out, and I, I can't get it from the testimony, if at the time, that was, that, that use of the clubhouse was associated with residents and people renting boats as opposed to the general public. It may be that at the time, who, I wasn't here in 2014, okay? But in 2014, if the testimony at that time was that this restaurant clubhouse facility is to be used by people who have residential units, people who have boat slips, and anybody else who wants to be a member, that's persuasive. And if that number was in or around 160, then I agree, introducing serving alcohol may not be a parking issue. But if at that time, it was for residents and boat slips, and there was 82 members, and it was BYOB, and now it's 160 members from anywhere in Cape May who can go there and buy alcohol because they happen to know the guy that is a member, or actually can be a member, not even, just whatever their membership requirements are. After tonight, I guess I'll never be a member. What, what are, there's no site plan considerations there? If they had six, if his testimony tonight was, we had 600 members now, we had 83 in 2014, we have 600 members now, you would, your testimony under oath would be, there'd be no site plan considerations?
My testimony would be that the zoning doesn't differentiate the way it sits now, and it can't be a consideration, it's already been approved. I'm not sure, the posture of your question is interesting in that you're asking, do we feel like it could be an impact?
I'm sorry, Shulo, you know I, I respect and like you very much. The fact that it was approved in one site plan doesn't mean we don't have any parking considerations. Mr. Hurlis will tell us that there are parking considerations.
But it's not, that's the thing, it's, it's not changing. That's...
Right.
Yeah.
This is, this is, I, I, I need a couple minutes with my people at this point. This is a, this is, you completely just took this and turned it on its head. It absolutely was approved with anybody in the community could use the facility categorically in 2014. You said you weren't there. I was there, I gave the testimony. And let me tell you why, because there were no homes. There were four, there were, there were six units. Five were abandoned, one was sold. We reversed a condominium association to make it a single-family home event there. We got 287 variances that night, bulk variances, to do that site plan. Craig was there. There was no people there for this club idea. It had to be opened to the marina and others in the community, and it's been a, a, a total success.
That would be very persuasive testimony. If the testimony is that the parking...
I already gave it 10 years ago. I'm giving it again now.
Well, maybe...
The board, the board never set a restriction on how many club members you have. You've made that up. And that is the issue that the board is faced with, like, you may...
I didn't even make it up. I haven't even made it up yet, right?
But, but, but I mean, there was never, there was never a discussion...
There never was.
On how many members you could limit this.
There was never a discussion on it.
And that's why the parking analysis was never done.
You've made a material change in the last year, which has caused this discussion. You went and got a club liquor license. That becomes a, a completely different animal than somebody sitting around a pool with a couple of kids and, and some Shirley Temples. Now you have a private club on the water, which you are proposing to expand into an indoor dining facility. That's a, that's a material, in my mind, that's a material change to the original use.
Here's, here's what I'm going to suggest you do. Mr. Colvin, let me help. Here's what I'm going to suggest you do. It, it's going sideways, okay? This is a good facility, very good professionals, person invested a lot of money in your town. I, I suggest you just regroup. You're under the impression that because we're focused on the parking, you're going to lose. That's not the case. Our board just wants to have an analysis to understand how many people are using this, what parking is available, how has it changed over time? The testimony is mushy. Your engineer testified it's the same number since 2014. Now you're not so sure. Maybe it is. Why not just regroup and come in and say, here's how many people that are there? Let me finish. Here's how many people there. Let our engineer have a minute. This may not be that big a deal. 18 seats, I mean, it's not that much, it's not that big a deal.
It doesn't, the seats don't, my point is, you're making my point.
Okay.
It's 180 seats. It's 2,000 seats. But if I say I am not going to make one more member available to the community, what's the difference? That's the wrong way to do the math. It's, it all hinges back on, well, how many people are here every day? Because that's what generates the traffic and the...
If you want to make the case that you're going to limit it to what it is now, and you want to come in and show that what you have now is adequate for its purposes, then fine, make that case.
We have made...
You flip this to a bad owner and they could just say, we're going to have 300 members.
I couldn't agree with you more.
So we have to, we have to somehow quantify and limit based on the number of parking places.
And that is all, we're asking for you to go on the record with how you have operated this, what your charter says with regard to membership, all of those things that I'm sure your lawyer can summarize, and, and, and so that we can find a way to ensure that the testimony tonight will be operationalized from you to the next owner.
And I think that, if I can add on to that, you know, the board is also slightly struggling with the, the fact of the boatell and how that relates to the alcohol and how everything is coming into play.
Boatell does not relate to the alcohol whatsoever.
Well, you testified...
Look, right now, as the testimony stands, right now, on the testimony under oath on what it's being used for, I believe requires a use variance. So, the, you know, if it's, and if it's being used different than a boatell, then you need to have parking for a three-unit residence, and you need a use variance. So we got to straighten that out. You can say it's an enforcement issue, but it impacts parking. You don't need parking spaces when it's a boatell use. When it is a boatell use, you now need, Craig will tell me, I don't know, the RSIS calculations needs some number of parking spaces, and it's a use variance. So that is not a non-issue. But why not just get your facts together and make a case? There's no objectors. If there is a terrible parking problem and it's a big disaster for the community, there'd be somebody sitting out there. So, let's just...
Fair, fair, fair enough, fair enough. I don't, I don't feel attacked here, and frankly, I, I like that there aren't even, there's just not even anybody else here. I think we've done a very good job in the community and put on a wonderful product down there. I know that we do not have a parking problem as it relates to all these uses. I also know that the homes that I've sold, where somebody takes the four cars that they can park in their unit, and they invite eight people down, they start pushing into our parking lot, and one day, we finally have to say, we tag all our parking so we can control it, push people out. You know, that's, there's pressure always. I'm happy to come back and lay it all out with you. I've worked with Craig for many years, great engineer, it's a great team, we'll do that. We, but I just, I have to tell you that I feel that we do a very good job down there. We are, this is a marina and a facility that Cape May should be proud of, we're proud of it, and we plan to keep it in the form that it is in. And I, I'm very sympathetic to that... I don't think the board, go ahead, I'm sorry. That, that Craig said like, but what if we get, lack of a better word, a jerk next? I don't want to see that happen.
I'm sure you don't.
Let's, let's tighten it up, let's, let's tie it down. That's exactly what I think we're trying to do here. I don't think there's any question... Right. That the, the way the property's run, it's a, it's a, it's a nice, it's a good property. Thank you. But the board has to justify what it has to justify. And we can't, we can't go, we can't go past that. We can't just let it slide.
Because if, if you came back for another application, another change in the future, someone is going to reflect on that and question what our decision was if we didn't have something...
Couple of other board members want to speak. Bob has a question.
Yeah, first of all, I, I know someone who was a member of the paddle club who does not have a boat, he does not have a house there, but he was one of the first ones to join there, and he got grandfathered in, is what he tells me. And he also told me, if you want to join, if I wanted to join now, I couldn't because I don't live there, that you've closed it. Is that correct? That you've closed the, the membership and you grandfathered some of the people in there?
Yeah, it's not, it's not correct because you don't live there or don't have a boat there. It's that we're sold out, we can't take any more members and operate the property correctly. And to be sure, if you have a boat slip, we're, 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 we want you to be a member before somebody out on the street. So, as a percentage, that, that group that's out on the street went down, went from this to this. Because when we started, there were no boats there. We had 210 slips and there were 30, 40 boats in the marina.
Well, there were more than that when I, when I was a member there and it was...
Oh, no, after we got there, it went really well. But, so the point is, is now we really don't have, that, that gets pushed out over time, you know, because everybody who's on the property really wants to be promoted. Rick, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. While we...
Hold on, hold on, Bob.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Just one other thing, in the comments that I have gotten from my friend, um, about the use of the, the, the boat club, he, he, they really enjoy it. They like the BYOB, uh, concept and all that. I mean, I, I kind of like what you've, you've done here, but I do think that maybe tightening it up a little bit, um, I know like, I also belong to Cape May National, okay? I'm a member there, and they have closed the membership there because they've had so many people that have applied to it, and they've limited it. You know, and, and, you know, doing something like that and making it part of the record, I think would go a long way.
Fair enough.
Well, I think everybody on the board at the time you came for the, um, the third floor, it was made very clear, the people that use that will come and go by boat.
Yes.
But I don't think that's, that's a zoning issue to enforce and not to be discussed here. That's a separate issue. Are, is your paddle club limited numbers by the ABC?
No.
And does it have an occupancy load?
The facility does, like, the spaces always have an occupancy.
So, so that'll regulate how many...
Like this room does.
Right, sure.
Everything does.
So that'll regulate how many people you can have there?
No. If, if it said 400, I wouldn't have more than I have now.
No, I, I understand that, but you have outdoors, like the indoors, the occupancy load of the indoor space is very limited to what you can, and, and I don't think, they're, they're not connected. How you rent, like I said, is your, is a zoning issue, not a planning, like, we've already agreed on that, and if it's not being followed, then that's a zoning board issue. This is something totally separate to me.
I agree with what you're saying, Rick.
With what, about the boat tell?
About the boat tell being-
The boat tell being a separate issue from what's coming-
I will tell you that you're entitled to your opinion about that, and that's fine. But if it's not being used as it is alleged to be used, as it was required to be used, it directly impacts parking. So I'm just telling you that-
And I'll agree with that.
Yeah, but that's a zoning enforcement issue.
But the applicant is back in front of this board now.
You can consider the fact that its actual use is impacting parking. Now, I'm not saying you got to condemn them for it. I'm just saying, if there's an appeal, my opinion is that if it's actually being used different than as represented, and the actual use impacts parking, and now you're reviewing a parking impact, you can absolutely consider that. Not punishing for not doing what they're supposed to do, but it's just like, well, I'm not going to try to do it in comparison. So that's my opinion on that. But I am sure after tonight, they will reflect upon their use, and they will either come in and amend their prior approval or use it properly because the way you're using it is not consistent with the-
Will there be fines attached to that? What are the ramifications of that?
That's not our ballot.
So whose job is it to enforce that?
The zoning officer.
Then that's where it should go, not-
But-
You're misunderstanding me, Rick, and I want to just be clear about this. We are not enforcing this. What we're saying is, in the parking analysis, you take the testimony as it's given to you, and you analyze it as to whether the parking is going to be a problem. And if they're saying, hey, I know we said we'd use this for residents, but it's really a disco club, and we have 400 people in there at night, you can't say, oh, yeah, well, that's an enforcement issue. We don't care what that, how that affects parking. I'm telling you that if what they're doing is not a boat tell, but rather an Airbnb, then that, the parking isn't forgiven. There's, it impacts parking.
I understand that. But the enforcement is use it the way you should, and you eliminate that problem.
Well, that's a corollary issue.
Well, that, that is absolute-
Or you can go back and take a look at your operational usage of it and come back and testify that you're going to adhere to the original directions.
Exactly, and eliminates the parking issue from that.
It would, but that needs to come back.
Well, it's a use, the underlying thing is it's a use issue, and this board would not have jurisdiction if it's a non-conforming use.
I think we-
Let's, let's have the applicant and his professionals talk.
Yeah, guys, did you want to regroup and talk about this for a minute, or what? Or what do you want to do?
Just one minute?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
We don't want to get too-
Go ahead.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, while we're, while we're there talking, guys, skip down on the agenda. Just payment of the bills. Anybody have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, just give me a second, I'm going to find my sheet.
Say aye.
You have two of them here.
There were two?
Yes, there are two.
We approved them both, right?
Legal and engineering.
All right, first one for legal, please, your motion.
I'll make the motion on the legal, payment of the bills.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor McDade motions, Mr. Lundholm seconds, and that's for all the bills.
Aye.
Yeah.
Mr. Gorgone?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Produces?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have another set of bills for Hurlis Planning and Engineering LLC. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is that Mrs. Reed?
I'll second it. It was Rick and then me.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Lundholm motions, Mrs. Reed seconds. Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Produces?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a comment to this board.
Well, I think we should wait for the applicant to-
Well, it's not, it has nothing to do with them directly. This is the second time in three months that this city has had the wool pulled over its eyes by Airbnbs.
Can we not talk about, okay?
Well, it's the truth.
I understand, but we're on the, we're still, the application is still kind of hanging out there, so I'd rather have that conversation separate from the-
All right, I'll wait.
Mr. King?
That's fine.
Mr. King?
Everything it's, we're talking, everything we're talking about now is in front of the public, and everybody's watching us.
Right.
Just wait.
Well, this should be for the public.
Should we have a-
I hope we have a 10-minute recess.
I second that motion.
Line.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Mics off, please.
Have a nice break. 7:30, we'll do it at 7:30.
I don't think you should talk about it off the record either, because you're all assembled, okay? So, go home and talk to your families about it if you'd like. Yeah, outrageously low. I must have missed the zero.
So I can make this comment when they're present.
There. Yeah, our main office is in Northfield. We have about 15, 16 people. Yeah, yeah, Do- 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 Odole, something like that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, my partner, my partner-
All right, everybody, mics on, please. We, we disrupted, we interrupted our meeting, so we're back in session now, guys, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we understand the board's concern with regard to the membership because as it currently stands, there are approximately 100, Mr. Scarborough testified there are 160 families. I think it may be plus or minus a few. And we understand the board's concern as articulated by Mr. King because if, he's right, if you suddenly have a surge in membership, although from a operational and sort of business standpoint, we, as it's been indicated, the membership is closed. But that's sort of informally. And Mr. Scarborough, on his own, does not have the authority here to limit the membership because we have to recall, we are dealing with a nonprofit corporation that has a board of trustees and has officers. And it also has governing documents, which I didn't bring with me tonight because I didn't, I didn't think I would need to. But the bylaws, I can indicate to you, do not have a provision in there limiting the membership. So in order to limit the membership, we would have to have a meeting of the trustees, and the bylaws would need to be changed. And we are willing to undertake that process. And I think that if we undertake that process and come back to you and show you that that process has been undertaken and that there is a limitation on membership, I think that will go a long way towards assuaging your concerns relative to parking because as I listen to you, I think the parking is the primary concern here.
Well, the boat tell thing is of interest too, but that's separate. What would be helpful is some kind of historical analysis to show that you've had 160 or something close to that for a period of time, and then you can testify operationally, we've dealt with that by making sure that residents don't park in the available spaces for the club or whatever, and that it's been worked fine, and then establish that, and then that number has meaning as a, something that can operate well, and then maybe the board will, you know, agree that as long as it's limited to that, that it makes sense, and then it'll be fine.
We can, we can pull those records because what happens, you know, operationally what happens is memberships renew on an annual basis. So, and I've said, I made this analogy before, they're kind of like my Sunday planned Phillies tickets. You know, I get the opportunity every year to renew it, and if I don't, then Mr. Hurlis, who's on the list, gets to, you know, buy my Sunday planned tickets. And that's sort of how this, the membership works. So we can pull those records, and we'll be able to see what the, and it does operate on a family basis. So, I'm a member, you know, I have, it's me and my wife. So 10 years ago, it might have been a little bit different. It might have been me, my wife, and my daughter. But now she lives in Philadelphia, and she's not a member anymore. But that's essentially how it works.
Is there a homeowners association with the development there?
Yeah, there is, just for that.
That might be a way of doing it. I've been, I was a past president of a homeowners association.
Bob, your mic is not on.
Sorry. I was a president of a homeowners association a number of years ago, and that's a way that we dealt with the clubhouse and the pool there was through the governing documents and of the homeowners association. Just a thought there.
And Rich, if I remember correctly, didn't you say you would also revisit the 2014 site plan approval process?
Yes, I have, I have the resolution. Mr. Hurlis is going to dig up his old document. I mean, it's my recollection that the parking was tied, the parking was acceptable because it was tied to residences and boat slips. Not from 2014, that's my recollection of the discussion in 2022. Mr. Hurlis believes that may have been the discussion in 2014. He's been here longer than all of us, so we will revisit that.
And Craig was also going to revisit the apparent lack of parking analysis in that process.
This may result in the board being asked to grant a parking variance. Just, I don't think that that club analysis has ever been done.
That's my point.
I think in 2014, the board approved a clubhouse. Now, that clubhouse has that word "club" in it, but I don't think they ever approved the club use per se. And there was no, I cannot remember any discussion about limiting or number of members. So that's why I advise the board that I don't think the parking analysis has ever been done for the club. And that's why you guys raised the concern of, hey, how are we controlling how many family memberships are being allowed here? Understandable.
Yeah, and also in that analysis, that particular intersection there that your driveway enters into is probably one of the most complicated and annoying intersections in towns. And so would an analysis of parking also be an analysis of egress and ingress?
That was, that was done in all of the, all of the previous site plan approvals. We talked about Roseman's Lane being one-way, being two-way. We've gone round and round with that.
Remember, we turned the alley back in?
Yes.
I remember that, I wasn't even on the plan.
So that has been, that has been dealt with over and over again. So I'm hoping not to revisit that, but-
You may have to if there is-
Mr. Shulo can provide a, or this, this team can provide a parking analysis that we can review and determine whether a variance is necessary or not, and whether the parking is adequate.
And some reasonable caps on, on growth.
Yeah, but, and I think, and the importance of this is not to say that they have a parking issue, but to put something in the resolution that controls what goes on at the site moving forward.
Yeah.
Mr. King, will we, will the boat tell be addressed through?
I mean, I, I think for, first of all, it won't be addressed by me in terms of enforcement.
Right, understood that.
But I do think, I mean, we write these resolutions for a reason, so somebody should be doing something about it. But if the testimony next time is that we recognize that we have to use a consistent resolution, and we will, that's one thing. If the testimony is, no, we want to use it as an Airbnb without any, or an illegal lease, leased unit, not tied to a boat slip, and then they say, but we also want a parking variance, then you can factor that into your analysis of the parking and the impact it has, that different use has. And, you know-
I just want to be clear for the-
There's no question that the boat tell clarification is going to come up the next meeting.
And so we would encourage you to have a conversation with your-
Yeah, and what would be helpful, if you could produce the mercantile license for that property as a, as an Airbnb or a boat tell, whatever it is, it's got to have a mercantile license, and I'm assuming you have one for that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other, any other questions, guys?
Well, we're going to table effectively, right?
No, we're just going to, we're going to adjourn it and continue.
Adjourn.
You don't need to re-notice.
Can I make my comment now, or?
Let's close out this application, and then I'll go to the board, and you can say what you want to say.
Okay.
Can I just ask one little question here? On the pictures that you provided, do we have a roundabout date on when these were taken? Just month, year?
Yeah, that's accurate for this year. That's off the webpage.
So, okay, so both, and how about the inside? So summer of 2025, about, okay, got it, okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Because this is adjourned, it'll be heard again at our next meeting, which, when do you want to-
Yeah, that's right, they may have some work to do.
Let's just talk about dates so I can announce, so we don't get jammed up.
January?
If, if there's a variance required, then they would be required to notice.
Then we would be required to notice.
Yeah, so that could change the calendar.
So let's put it in January?
I would put it at January, and if that changes, then I will contact the board secretary and Mr. King and Mr. Hurlis.
I just want to announce the date and time, so you're covered.
So, for now, January.
Second meeting in January is what, January 15th?
Oh, damn, yeah.
When's our, when's our second meeting in January? Okey-dokey.
All right. I'll see.
All right. Is there a phone among us?
Second Tuesday.
Aye.
First Tuesday, oop, it'd be the-
Would January 27th make sense?
27th.
Would January 27th make sense?
Yes.
27th, all right, so this application will be continued to January 27th. It'll be heard at 6:00 PM at this location. If for any reason that date needs to be adjourned, we will try to put it in the agenda ahead of time, so check the agenda, and there'll be announcement of the new date at that time unless we can get it all together by then. Okay?
Very well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
You wanted to say something?
Yes, I do have a comment. And-
This is for the good of the order, I suppose.
This application's closed. The comment now is for the good of the order, our board's just discussing, but you're welcome to participate as public. Go ahead.
Well, I would like every business owner to be here, because I'm a business owner in the area. And I succeed when other businesses succeed. But they have to abide by our resolutions, and we have to enforce our resolutions. This is the second time in three months that an individual has come before us and has not followed our resolutions about how they are to operate, their boat tell, or their rental units, or whatever. This happened three months ago with the people who own, I don't know their names, the people that own the Queen May, where they had this building that they purchased, and it was for the specific use of their employees. And there was never any intention, never any intention for these people that own that building to use it for their employees. They opened it up immediately as an Airbnb. And then three months ago, we passed again that they could operate, what was that shoe store called? I can't remember, in the mall, that shoe store, test, what was it called?
Cuzin House.
Yeah, where they, they're opening that up. Now we have some before us tonight, where we, I remember specifically, I was new on the board, that this was supposed to be used for transient boaters, and it wasn't. It's an Airbnb, I can pick it up on my phone. I can go rent it out now if I want. When are we going to actually start enforcing what we pass? And maybe that's a charge to the city council or the city as a whole because we're not enforcing-
It's not a fight.
It's not our job to enforce it.
It's the zoning board, it's the zoning officer and- The zoning officer and the town attorney are the ones who deal with that code enforcement.
And if I could comment on that specifically, the city has invested in software to pick up on Airbnbs that have not registered with mercantile licenses, that have not followed through on what they need. Particularly, I mean, some things have to come from people issuing a complaint. So in this instance, this is the first I'm hearing of this situation. So obviously, at a certain point, the zoning officer would be notified, hey, that's an issue and it needs to be addressed. So I encourage people, if you think there's something out of compliance that this board passed, you can always reach out to the zoning officer. But then we turn into an issue of, we have neighbors calling on neighbors and you have a full-out zoning war. So I think the city's trying to do a delicate balance of competing interests, but I think for particularly Airbnbs, the city has undertaken a huge effort and expense, and the city manager did announce at a meeting, and we have pretty much almost 100% compliance on that, right, Deputy Mayor?
So at least on the, I can speak to this only because it's been an agenda for MTRAC with pushing. We updated, they got the software. It just went into place this last year. In this situation, I would say that it would be considered so unique, in my view, and I've been involved in the entire mercantile licensed short-term rentals and the compliance on filing and getting your applications, I don't know that anybody would have picked up on this. Because it's such a narrow definition of use in a one-conditioned place, meaning, how many other motels do we have? None that I'm aware of. So we had one that was passed through an ordinance in 2014. You know, that's not the kind of thing that the code enforcers driving around going, let me go knock on the door at the motel today and find out if they have a boat. So I really think this would have been an outlier without having been informed by someone. We are, we do have almost 100%, 100% compliance on people who are out there renting through an Airbnb verbo, filed for their applications this year. We understand, we actually, you can go back to history on these houses to see how long they've been renting and when they, how many times they didn't...
I do think it's worth the effort to go back and try to deconstruct this situation.
I don't disagree with you, Rich, because it is a little...
The interesting part is, was a mercantile license issued for it to be an Airbnb?
I will be on that tomorrow morning.
Right, because if it was, without looking at the resolution, then, I mean, that's not like someone shouldn't go, you know, get yelled at or anything, but that would explain why the software didn't pick up. Or did the software not pick it up?
Exactly, and why they didn't pick it up. And that's one of the things I want to look at with Aaron, the city clerk.
That came out of nowhere for me. I didn't know that was an issue.
Again, it was just a comment. It was just a comment.
And I appreciate that, you know, as well, and obviously, as these resolutions are approved, Karen does send that over to our zoning official who gets a copy of it. And, you know, obviously, if he were to be, if the zoning official were to be out there for another reason, of course, he would take note of, hey, wait a second, this is not in compliance of what was approved. So, I mean, sometimes, like the deputy mayor said, this was such a unique thing that it did raise the issue, and now it has to be sorted out.
I'm just glad I can't be blamed. That resolution was pretty clear.
Very clear.
Look, enforcement is always a problem, has always been a problem.
So the construction that you're talking about tonight was caught by Bruce. They didn't have permits. So what they're trying to legalize now, they never got a permit.
I was going to...
That's how it all started.
Was they already started working on the inside?
Well, let's not talk about application. We already quasi judicial.
Yeah, she's bringing up that they had...
I agree. I'm just saying, the generalities are better.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Merry Christmas. Happy to...